Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kalenda.
Here.
All present.
Cool. Line item three, discussion and action on past meeting minutes from November fourteenth and from the special meeting on November nineteenth.
I don't think we got the special meeting minutes. Did you get all those?
Sure. Let's get this real short.
It's me.
What kind of apps are those?
3D apps.
3D apps.
Alright.
Lost my name.
She's already out of control.
She got on the phone.
Because the board has a chance to review the minutes.
Yes.
I make the motion to approve unless there's any questions or issues regarding past meeting minutes from the fourteenth meeting and the November nineteenth meeting.
I second it. Do you need more time to review? No.
Okay.
Bracken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kalenda?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Line item number four, discussion and action on POs for the general fire and ambulance.
This is just, just a double.
Oh, yeah, it's a double.
Double sign.
Yeah, that was a little thing. Just a little.
Hold on one second.
Is that correct?
This one? Uh huh.
High two, that's what it's just called. It's a little high two, that's what it's called.
There's seven.
Oh, there is? Oh, wow.
Yeah, that's good.
I had to do another one. That's good. Okay, that might not explain it.
Yeah, there was seven, right off.
Last time. Last time I understood, there wasn't that many. Oh my God. Motion. I'll second.
To approve?
Yeah.
Bracken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kalenda?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Line item five, action in, action on resolution two thousand eighteen dash twelve, order notice of election. Winner is?
Ding ding ding, Terry's Ward two.
This is.
Oh, Ward two.
Yep. Filing period is February. Should make that up. First Monday in February to the, that Wednesday at five. Election is April second, probably, it's the first Tuesday in April.
You've done an excellent job so far. If you decide to stay, I personally endorse your campaign. Of course, I might please use many votes if you need to.
It just flares.
I might just, yeah, I just maybe neutral.
You want some to give away some?
Hurry up, Cindy, it's like watching C-SPAN.
You're a mess. The computer was going through updates. Yes. Resolution two thousand eighteen dash twelve, notice of election. We have resolved that the governing body of the town will freedom for that for the purpose of electing officers of said town that a nonpartisan general election, if needed, shall be held on Tuesday, April second, two thousand and nineteen. Be it further resolved that the filing period for the electing officer of said town shall begin at eight AM on Monday, February fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and close at five PM on Wednesday, February sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Be it further resolved that the offices of said town to be elected are nominated by Ward and elected at large. So you must live within the Ward in order to declare candidacy, but the entire town elects. Be it further resolved that the following officer will be elected for four-year terms. Board of trustee, Ward two, will then expire in twenty twenty-three. Be it further resolved that each candidate must be qualified elector by virtue of being a resident and registered voter within the municipality or in the Ward if an office is from a Ward for filing a declaration of candidacy. Be it further resolved that the absentee balance will be provided in accordance with the state law. Adopted this twelfth day of December, two thousand and eighteen. This is what I present to the election board for them to have the ballot, or to have the packets ready for filing. So Tyler's on here for two and a half years. Approximately. Plus. Yeah, less prior to that. Yes. Plus. Yes.
So we take action on that?
To approve this resolution for the notice of election to be given to the election board.
Let's see, your motion to, I like that motion.
Are you gonna finish everything she said?
I haven't actually approved what she said.
I'll second that.
Bracken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kalenda?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Line item six, in our special meeting, we agreed to approve the agreement with Pioneer as long as it was accepted by the city attorney. The city attorney met with Pioneer and I did too, and they changed the contract to where it fits our ordinance. So the attorney sent that back and we officially already approved that agreement, but since it fits our ordinance now, I think that we should, according to the ordinance, approve Pioneer for a permit, an issue, a permit for the LTE miniature cell tower that will be put up in the park. And the purpose of that is to provide LTE coverage on Pioneer to the whole freedom community, I guess.
Yeah, what did you say, about a mile or two, between a mile and two, three is what we need. We need it, definitely need it.
I don't know, there's a lot of phone calls I miss with my phone in my living room because we have such bad signal. I don't know if that's anything I want to approve on. But it'll be good because LTE is the next latest and greatest. According to Pioneer, we won't have three G or four G in the next few years, it'll all be LTE, so it'll be good for, for the whole community business and everybody.
Starting late.
Well, how's it? How's it? You're just in time.
We actually are.
Yeah. Waking outside with a glass on the door.
No, I actually even parked in the cripple section. I got her tag, I just don't have it in that pickup.
Well, very good. So do we need to approve issuance of the permit? I make a motion to approve Pioneer Wireless to put in a small cell tower in Freedom according to our ordinance and their little contract.
I'm just thinking. Bracken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kalenda?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we have a very special guest, County Commissioner Randy McMurphy, just in time for line item seven, which is discussion and notification of county traffic warning realized.
Yeah, okay, I got, I didn't bring a sign, but I got signs for you to put up on, down here and on the other end, saying that there's a tree in the road, in the street. I got a picture of it somewhere here. They made it for me out of CD, but I think that, I think it's important that you have, oh, Christmas tree ahead, one on the left.
I like it.
I think that's important, that you have that there.
I do too.
I mean, once you start to think about it, you probably had another block in, put anything in the middle of the street without warning somebody. So, I don't know, if Stewart's got, Troy thought he had some of those four-legged deals that we can pass a sign on and they just, if not, we'll make something or get some or whatever. If Stewart's got some, we'll use them, I'll give him some more, whatever, but I think you can just put a sign on it and take them off.
Okay.
So.
I like it.
We'll see about getting that put up, then put up tomorrow for you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Saturday is still Sunday?
Sunday.
Okay. Everything's good to go?
Tree and Saturday and signs and the, the kids have been, well, not kids, I guess, young adults have done a pretty good job of, of taking care of the tree and Saturday with the county's help.
Would, do we need any donate, do you need donations for candy or any of that stuff?
I don't know.
Marlowe?
They might. Want to check with Mr. Robert or Marlowe?
Well, I know Casey Lennington and Summer Ralston and Karen Marlowe were there.
Well, if.
They could probably use candy.
There's an aid.
Money, hump, then.
Holler.
Okay, I'll send it your way.
Just have them call me, give them my number because I gotta be in meetings tomorrow, all day tomorrow, and all my, all day Friday, or something to do with the Allos schools.
Right in your district.
Five days.
Oh my goodness.
December, February, March, some kind of planning committee, I'm not sure what it is.
Are you on the planning committee or do you?
Ah, they said every principal, every principal, no, they, it just, they just ask individuals. It's not as a commissioner do. But it's five eight-hour deals, I don't know what you're gonna do for sure. I would just call and ask if I.
I know at the last parent teacher conferences, they had parents fill out a survey and stuff online for community input on different educational assets.
They said each principal asks six, or five people to, so I guess that'd be about thirty people to do. You know any more than that about Stacy?
I do not. I hadn't heard anything actually, but Marion is the one that covers all the Allos stuff, so I don't know.
Well, I'm not, tomorrow will be the first one.
Good one.
But I won't, I'll be pretty much out of pocket, it's what I'm getting at, but, but they can call me if they need some donations, so. Need some help. You done with me?
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
See y'all. Good evening.
You too.
You too.
Oh, cool. That was nice of them to stop by.
Wes?
Line item number eight, since I guess that concludes number seven, department reports. I have the maintenance department report. And it says, according to our maintenance manager, the water tower will be offline for several weeks while they are painting the inside of it. Now here will still have water, it'll just be pressured off of.
The tower.
Roll of water pressure, which hopefully is.
I didn't notice anything in front today because it looks like they've already started, so. Also, maybe.
Will it still have water?
Yeah. On the water, then up on the hill, we got water.
Stewart says at least three to four weeks depending on the date that it's painted inside and out long, I guess obviously whether it takes a degree.
To save, yeah.
And so far, they have not started painting the inside as of today, so. That is it for the water tower. His other item on maintenance department is, Chris Miller had put in a, another house over here, and they need water, and our water main is on the other side of the road, so we will have to bore that. And he has so far two estimates. One is from Comfort Zone. And it is to run one-inch water line under Greer Road. And the other one is from Blanks and Plumbing, and it is to bore over the road and run three-quarter inch.
So what do the current houses have? Any idea?
Well, regardless, the bore's still gonna be.
The bore's gonna be the same, it's rather than. Right in the line. Yeah. But I was just thinking, I mean, when you pressureize the line. When was the last time the house was hit, did we then?
Okay.
When was the last time like they had to run something, have to do that?
Way before my time, a lot of the lines have been ever put in a road here before me.
Yeah, because they tore down and replaced the Breeden West House, so I mean, everything's pretty much been there for quite some time. All the new construction's been on that water side, the Cimarron Estates, so that's, I mean, it hasn't been bored since, well, it's ten years.
I think that water line come, it's, it's what ties in the Cimarron Estates and then goes back up north behind Sierra to the school. So it's on the north side of Winoka Blacktop. This is. It's just the Burghits thing, their estimate says to dig up six-inch city water main top of a water line under Greer Road. Okay, it's a road bore. We'll run the water line through one quarter inch poly sleeve. So they're putting in one quarter inch poly sleeve and pulling one inch pipe through it, I guess.
Yeah.
What does it mean? What does it mean? It's ours, gets difference, always not as much as I had it, but you know, it's.
There's a little bit of a price difference, one of the companies I've had bad luck with, another one I've had good luck with, so.
There's a difference in the size of the pipe here.
I'm trying to come straight to the point. The one that has the most detailed estimate is the one that told me they changed the part on our AC unit for eight hundred dollars and they didn't, and I called them back and I said they didn't do anything because that guy doesn't work here anymore, and that guy passed me in Woodward in one of their trucks.
How soon, is he needing, is he needing this hook up ASAP?
Yeah, I like, I don't know, probably. I mean, we have contracts with both of them, though, but at what point does the board have to approve projects? What's the dollar amount?
It looks like he's waiting on one more.
Or five thousand?
Yeah.
Same with purchases, I mean, if it's a big purchase, then it has to be approved.
Is he waiting on one more?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's this one.
I guess that's, yeah.
That's the one.
I better abstain from this because I do business with both of them, so I'll put their business up again.
I mean, this is something you have to build on anyway, it doesn't look like, is it's not an action, is that correct?
It's not exactly, apples don't work as good either because one of them's running one-inch line, the other one's running six quarter inch pad. So they're doing the poly line so they can sleeve PVC through it.
Uh, whatever they run, but that running the sleeve will just make it simple for the future if everyone needs to be replaced. You don't put a sleeve and just, then there's just like any other line, you'd have to re-bore again.
Yeah, another bid's not detailed enough, I don't know.
That's what that one bothers me, that it's not detailed to where, I mean, you'd presume maybe a sleeve, but.
I mean, looking right on it, please give more detail, sleeve included, I mean.
My detail orientation rubbing off one of.
Is there, is there?
I've been chastised so much.
That would be good, but what about a third, is there a price that would maybe, Stewart needs to check, he'd get a third estimate just to compare.
Regardless of anywhere, it's gonna be all close, I mean, unless he's local, it's all gonna run.
I mean, coming from Woodward, I mean, is there anything on it? I mean, I know he doesn't know, I mean, these are just the likes of the people that we dealt with in the past, but.
No, if they're calling for me, it's gonna be more, just as a reminder.
Yeah. One of them did do the bid on the pit down there and I think he's the one that saved us a lot of money because he agreed to just adjust the floats instead of digging it up. And they scoped our sewer lines and stuff for it. On the other hand, the other one comes out at two o'clock in the morning with their jet rate due.
Question is, which one can get to it faster?
Yeah, because I imagine it's really.
Guess I'm done with that report.
Yep.
He's sick?
No, we're just trying to expedite our meetings and not have.
Part of the news, sample work, but he hasn't written.
Where you submit.
Yeah.
Town report.
I read my reports, so.
I probably need to start again.
Everybody just submit something.
Yeah, bear in mind bullet points, nothing else.
The recording can be just empty chairs, one person reading them out, Cindy.
Looks like board member Smith brought here.
So people get that, get that figured out and get that out here pretty quick.
Okay, Ellen Stewart has his notes. I believe we can move on to the office managers' report.
She did not have anything, so I'm guessing everything is being paid as agreed?
Oh, okay. Moving right along to the town clerk slash treasurer's report.
Sorry, how do you hear it?
In the hole, no, a hole there.
Don't know. Um, I do have Bonnie's resignation letter, she did submitted on the twelfth. As her last name, her two-minute notice has up the twelfth, she submitted it on the twenty-eighth, sorry. She does, thank us for the opportunity to work, let's help her.
We wish her the very best in her due year. Yeah.
I have Oklahoma Municipal Utility Providers membership. I haven't ever done it in the past. It's fifty dollars for a municipality of population under twenty-five hundred. And what this does, it gives us, like, keeps us up to date information through emails on the drip grips, on like water issues, regulations, dealing with water, and this is all, all water, coordinated work to meet with the EPA and Oklahoma's DEQ regulations. It's just another lobbyist group. It's just another lobbyist group, do we or don't we want, I mean, they also send out a little notebook of what other cities charge for utilities as a general rule of thumb to kind of look over, look at, and.
What is the, is it an annual fee?
It's an annual fee. And I hope that you will join to help your community and just support all municipalities with current issues. Own up parts to keep costs as low as possible and ensure everyone is eligible to be a part of this group. Like I say, it's kind of like a legislative lobbyist.
Lobbyist type group that goes for.
Any type of water issue or DEQ, help to keep rips and CDVGs in place, things like that. So, I mean, it's just something to think about, there's no deadline to turn it in. So.
Does the DEQ not give out notifications?
On any changes.
Yeah, on any of the things that they.
That they do legislation about, no, we don't get any sort of, like, what they're going to legislature on. We don't get any notification on that. Now, if some, that the legislature changes it and then what they've asked for goes into place, we get notification, but we don't get any sort of notification as to what they're going and asking for.
What is it, Randy?
It'd be fifty dollars for us, 'cause like I say, it's based on population. So it'll always be the lesser, yeah, fifty dollars. Otherwise, population's over twenty-five hundred, it's a hundred dollars per municipality, so. They're kind of like a sister group to OML. It's like a subcommittee. A water environment advisory group for the Oklahoma Municipal League.
Do they also inform you if there's grants, money available for different things, things like that?
I don't know, 'cause like I said, we haven't been a part of it, but with the always never-ending threat of root grants going away and CDVG, cheap grants going away and stuff, it's kind of like, do we want to have our name tied to another source of keep things going? I mean, like I say, we can look at more research, I just opened this and got it, so that's why I don't have any more research than what is sitting here.
There is such little support for municipalities and utility providers from the enforcement people. I mean, our state legislates these laws and there's huge gaps in what we're supposed to be doing as far as poly-degrade areas. And I think any organization that can help to fill that in would be good. I mean, a lot of times there's issues with the OCC and even our pipeline with the DOT that they may tell you, you need to do this, or it has to be held within these parameters, but they really don't tell you how to go about doing that. I don't think it would hurt to try it for a year.
Yeah, for fifty dollars, that's.
Just more information to have on hand.
Yeah, and it lists here, like, their steering committee and, like, Alan Ruffel from Woodward's on there.
So December twelfth, two thousand nineteen, we'll have to have it on the agenda to evaluate if the Oklahoma Municipal Utility Providers is working.
Yes, OML is good. But I will put this on as a footnote for next month for membership.
Okay.
Here is the balance sheet of the general ledger accounts and the MTA accounts. The only thing that next month when I do reviews, it gets put out there, is that that share corp, all our vegetation control and all of that, that seems to be running about two thousand dollars a month. And I'm, I don't know what it's all for.
A beauty?
Yeah, but there's a whole, I mean, seems to be more and more stuff added. And like I say, I don't know what it's all used for, but it just seems like.
I didn't understand.
It, so it has several months, it's been two thousand and more consistently. And like I say, I just want, I mean, no, the liquid hasn't smelled, it's been really nice, but just as a cost factor, something that might, he might want to see if there's other companies or anything else that would need.
It would be nice to, for them to explain.
Yeah.
Uh, 'cause they may be going through a cycle of cleaning up something that we should have been doing like fifteen years or something, and once we're over that hump.
Right, it's just.
We head back out.
Right, I just, that's just a concern I had over the past months with the expenditures. I'm kind of waiting to see if it continued and it didn't, so. Probably get time for this.
Hey, we got enough money to add another terminal out at the airport.
No, we didn't. Sorry.
We probably need Stewart to go dig up our septic tank that's flooded out of the ground, 'cause it's been empty for. Don't worry, this guy won't hurt you.
Not much to do up there anyway, it's all out, almost.
I mean, kind of pipe and drag it out. It's indentation.
Guys could do this volunteers.
What's that, you gotta go with it, okay, drive. He can help load it up.
She'll take pictures and send me this.
I do need to put on the board for him to fix the bearing on the directional aid at the airport. I think that's supposed to be operable, or we need to cut it out and remove it. Because it's.
Has it ever been open?
Yeah, it's supposed, it's supposed to pivot and tell you wind direction, well, anybody that's that's flying youth in out of his direction, like, it's gonna be a, uh.
Have we had anything land out there for a while, any planes? What about the helicopter, I know we've had some nine-one-one.
The last one landed behind the Fairlock of the Wada County.
Helicopter, not airplane.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I mean, um, 'cause it was closer to the site. Um, 'cause a lot of times they, the air evac will land earlier rounds or the, the ball belt, I've just flown it there several times, so.
All right, hey, Paul Harvey, what else you got?
Um, one thing that I am going to get some more, um, clarification on is a, uh, different backup system, like, right now, we back up twice a week on flash drives and everything else, but there's other backups, you know, like to the cloud and to the other secure sites.
Automatically does, then?
Right, and I think that we kind of, we're getting more and more computer-oriented, everything's on the computer to where if, you know, N5 comes through here and wipes us out, it's gonna go ahead and take that safe and land it in cloud of Kansas, and we're not gonna have flash drives to back our system up, where I think. But it's all based on, um, how much you're gonna use server space, so I, I haven't had an opportunity to kind of figure that out yet. So it's something I'm looking.
Online cloud-based.
So, actually something I'm looking at that you guys might get information on the next couple of months.
So our billing software is not cloud-based, it's all.
No, it's, right, it's Windows-based versus the DOS-based that I started with. And, um.
We still have that at my work, actually.
The DOS.
Yes.
N5 print.
I know, uh, uh, uh. Takes two hours to print the bills. But, um, yeah, no, we've, Jack finally got Windows-based, with the program that he does updates to regular lessons and such, CDs to, you know, upload the new updates and stuff, but like I said, we, as a backup, we do it twice a week and put it on our safe, but like I say, with everything becoming more and more.
And we need an offsite.
We, yeah, we need something offsite, so. But that's all I do have.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm looking at. Thank you, County Clerk. Sure.
Thank you for that detailed report, I mean, moving along to line item number nine, does anyone have any news or business? Okay, now. Are there any remarks from the governing board, if any? I take that as a note. I make the motion to adjourn to County Creek December twelfth, very early scheduled meeting at six forty-seven, six forty-eight PM.